I have six o'clock. I'll call the regular school board meeting on March 31st, 2025 to order with all members present except for Mr. Montez. We're going to switch the order up a little bit. We are going to rise for the pledge, then we're going to do student recognition, and then we will go to open comments. All right? I have six o'clock. I'll call the regular school board meeting on March 31st, 2025 to order with all members present except for Mr. Montez. So if you'll please rise for the pledge. We're going to switch the order up a little bit. We are going to rise for the pledge, then we're going to do student recognition, and then we will go to open comments. All right? We are going to switch the order up a little bit. We are going to rise for the pledge, then we're going to do student recognition, and then we will go to open comments. All right? So if you'll please rise for the pledge. So if you'll please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That for the Texas flag. That for the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Thank you. If you guys will, we have open forum, but we will come back to the public comments. If you guys will ask your students that are here for recognition, we would like to recognize them. If you guys will, we have open forum, but we will come back to the public comments. If you guys will ask your students that are here for recognition, we would like to recognize them. Thank you. Who's up? High school? Thank you. Who's up? High school?
Yep. Yep.
Great. Thank you. Great. Thank you. Welcome. Come on to the front. Welcome. Come on to the front. You guys will come all the way and just kind of circle. That's your audience right there. So keep on coming, yes? You guys will come all the way and just kind of circle. That's your audience right there. So keep on coming, yes? Right there. Great. And just kind of back up, and then that'll be great. You're all right. You're all right. It's all right. Right there. Great. And just kind of back up and then that'll be great. You're all right. You're all right. It's all right. Welcome, Coach Humphreys. Welcome, Coach Humphreys.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Not everybody was able to be with us today. We generally have sixteen girls and six boys who were regional qualifiers in powerlifting, Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Not everybody was able to be with us today. We generally have sixteen girls and six boys who were regional qualifiers in powerlifting, and seven girls who were state qualifiers, and two boys that were state qualifiers. So just to give them a little recognition, the girls, this is their second time, their second year in a row. and seven girls who were state qualifiers, and two boys that were state qualifiers. So just to give them a little recognition, the girls, this is their second time, their second year in a row. They were the Region Two Small 3A Division Champions. It's a very difficult accomplishment that they were able to obtain. They were the Region Two Small 3A Division Champions. It's a very difficult accomplishment that they were able to obtain. And then we went to the state powerlifting meet in Edinburgh, Texas over spring break, and they were second as a team. So came real close to being state champions as a team, so. And then we went to the state powerlifting meet in Edinburgh, Texas over spring break, and they were second as a team. So came real close to being state champions as a team, so. Just to recognize the girls' names, some of them aren't here. Reese Finney, a sophomore, placed fourth at the regional meet. Talia Davenport, okay, freshman, regional qualifier. Just to recognize the girls' names, some of them aren't here. Reese Finney, a sophomore, placed fourth at the regional meet. Talia Davenport, okay, freshman, regional qualifier. Carson Cosmer, she was a senior, fifth place at regionals. Piper Bennett, junior, fourth place at the regional meet. Lenora Busby, she's a senior, regional champion and a state champion. Carson Cosmer, she was a senior, fifth place at regionals. Piper Bennett, junior, fourth place at the regional meet. Lenora Busby, she's a senior, regional champion and a state champion. Taryn Busby, the senior, regional champion and a second place finisher at the state meet. Nala Goff, who's not with us, senior, third place, and was a state qualifier. Taryn Busby, the senior, regional champion and a second place finisher at the state meet. Nala Goff, who's not with us, senior, third place, and was a state qualifier. Ellie King, she's a senior, fourth place at regionals and was a state qualifier. Cecil Sidney, the senior, third place at the regional meet. Ellie King, she's a senior, fourth place at regionals and was a state qualifier. Cecil Sidney, the senior, third place at the regional meet. Bailey McMillan, junior, regional qualifier. Cameron Ritz, senior, she was a second place and a state qualifier. Bailey McMillan, junior, regional qualifier. Cameron Ritz, senior, she was a second place and a state qualifier. Dakota Vaughn, sophomore, second place state qualifier. Emery Slater, junior, regional qualifier. Dakota Vaughn, sophomore, second place state qualifier. Emery Slater, junior, regional qualifier. Leila Morales, junior, fifth place at regionals. DeKaya Light, the freshman, fifth place at the regional meet. Leila Morales, junior, fifth place at regionals. DeKaya Light, the freshman, fifth place at the regional meet. And Caitlin Baker, who is a senior, and she was a third place finisher at the state meet. And Caitlin Baker, who is a senior, and she was a third place finisher at the state meet. Now, on the boys' side, we had six guys qualify for regionals. Judd New, Rowdy Bishop, Ivan Galindo, James Lincoln, Landon Knox, and Robert Morales. Now, on the boys' side, we had six guys qualify for regionals. Judd New, Rowdy Bishop, Ivan Galindo, James Lincoln, Landon Knox, and Robert Morales. James Lincoln was a state qualifier, and Robert Morales was the regional champion and a second place finisher at the state meet. James Lincoln was a state qualifier, and Robert Morales was the regional champion and a second place finisher at the state meet. It's a great year, and they've worked really hard this year. Thank you. It's a great year, and they've worked really hard this year. Thank you.
Congratulations, kids. Good job. We have to say for a picture, so we're going to stay right there. We're going to come on this side. Congratulations, kids. Good job. We have to say for a picture, so we're going to stay right there. We're going to come on this side. Boys, come to the front. And Coach Daniel, you have to take the podium, and then we're ready. Boys, come to the front. And Coach Daniel, you have to take the podium, and then we're ready. Welcome, boys. Welcome, boys.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Just like with powerlifting, a few of the guys couldn't be here tonight. I know a couple of them playing baseball, a few of them are working or have other obligations. All right. Just like with powerlifting, a few of the guys couldn't be here tonight. I know a couple of them playing baseball, a few of them are working or have other obligations. As a team this year, we were able to win a district championship. It's the first one in over twenty years and the first outright. As a team this year, we were able to win a district championship. It's the first one in over twenty years and the first outright. And the first outright in thirty years. So they really accomplished a whole lot. And the first outright in thirty years. So they really accomplished a whole lot. I don't believe any of these guys were alive for either of these things. If they were, there would be a lot of question marks on that. So they did a really nice job. I don't believe any of these guys were alive for either of these things. If they were, there would be a lot of question marks on that. So they did a really nice job. These four seniors, a couple of sophomores that weren't here, that aren't here today are Eduardo Garcia and RJ Heikel. These four seniors, a couple of sophomores that weren't here, that aren't here today are Eduardo Garcia and RJ Heikel. Juniors that are here today are Jaden Countryman and Deacon Williams. Jacob is playing baseball tonight. Juniors that are here today are Jaden Countryman and Deacon Williams. Jacob is playing baseball tonight. The seniors that couldn't be here today are Tristan Hammond, and he was a first-team All-District selection. The seniors that couldn't be here today are Tristan Hammond, and he was a first-team All-District selection. Kyle Rogers was the co-sixth man of the year for the district, and then Ray Ochoa was the co-defensive player of the year for the district. Kyle Rogers was the co-sixth man of the year for the district, and then Ray Ochoa was the co-defensive player of the year for the district. The seniors that are able to be with us today, they were also part of a playoff team last year and won, they've won forty-five games the last two years. The seniors that are able to be with us today, they were also part of a playoff team last year and won, they've won forty-five games the last two years. They've really done a nice job the last couple of seasons. First one is Jonah Payne. Jonah, so yeah, everybody knows Jonah. He's right there in the middle. All right? They've really done a nice job the last couple of seasons. First one is Jonah Payne. Jonah, so yeah, everybody knows Jonah. He's right there in the middle. All right? He was a, he was academic All-State Elite Team this year, which is a really big deal. He was a, he was academic All-State Elite Team this year, which is a really big deal. Joaquin de La Hoya is first-team All-District. Maddox was co-MVP this year, and Diego was also first-team All-District. Joaquin de La Hoya is first-team All-District. Maddox was co-MVP this year, and Diego was also first-team All-District. So these guys have really accomplished a lot this season and last season as well, and I'm really proud of them. So these guys have really accomplished a lot this season and last season as well, and I'm really proud of them.
Congratulations, guys. Congratulations, kids. Now it's time for a picture frame. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations, kids. Now it's time for a picture frame.
All right. All right.
Powerlifting and basketball. We will now move to item number two, public comments. And we have two people for public comments. Kara Boyd, you'll be first. So if you want to just go ahead and come to the podium, or I can read this first and then you can come. It doesn't matter. Do, uh, do you want to move the podium? You ready for me, Ms. Jones?
Great. Citizens are invited to attend school board meetings and may address the board on posted agenda items or on subject matters not posted on the agenda. Citizens may address the board during the public comment portion of the board meeting if they sign up before the meeting begins or before the public comment portion of the meeting takes place. No presentation shall be allowed to exceed five minutes. Specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to public speaker inquiries. But the board shall not deliberate or make any decisions regarding any subject that is not on the meeting's posted agenda. If a subject mentioned is listed on the meeting's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. Thank you. And welcome.
And you have five minutes. She's got you. We're ready. Thank you.
Member of the school board and superintendent ball. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to speak in front of you today. And thank you for placing the Texas House Bill 547 on your agenda for discussion tonight at the meeting. Unfortunately, my son Gavin and my husband Dustin are unable to attend tonight. They're currently in Crawford, representing the Clifton 12U baseball team as player and coach. For the past four years, Gavin has proudly worn several Clifton Cub uniforms. If someone was to ask him if he was a Clifton Cub, he would reply with a resounding yes. His resolute affirmation wouldn't stem from a winning record. Many of his seasons have been losing. It wouldn't be from a championship team. He hasn't been on one. It comes from his sense of belonging to his team and to the community at large. It is his desire to have a place in the community and to belong to the community that he loved and has grown up in since he was four years old. And quite frankly, the idea of having to give up being a Clifton Cub to him brings some great sorrow. However, he would not change his mind about being homeschooled, as that is his preference. I brought with me two pictures tonight. One is of Gavin's very first baseball team here, a bunch of cute little 10U baseball teams a couple of years ago, and another one from a recent friend's birthday party that he attended. I love both of these pictures because they show a group of boys living life happily together. You cannot tell from these pictures which of the boys are public schooled and which of the boys are homeschooled. From the birthday party picture, you can't tell which of them play sports, which of them don't. You can't tell who loves to cook, who lives inside or outside of school limits. They're just boys that are happily living together. I am privileged to the information to know that in this baseball picture that there were two boys who, at the time of this picture, were homeschooled, and now only one of them is currently homeschooled, as one has enrolled into Clifton ISD. And statistically, at least one of the boys in this picture is going to leave Clifton ISD before graduation for private or homeschooling, as about ten percent of students do. But regardless of how each boy is schooled or whether he plays sports or not, you're looking at the future of the Clifton community, or at least a portion of it. Twenty years from now, these boys are going to be the future small business owners, teachers, farmers, coaches in this community. And when they hold these roles, not a single person will ask them to show their school transcripts. They are going to be one community from many backgrounds, each contributing their own unique piece of the puzzle that makes Clifton what Clifton is, which is an amazing little town. Lastly, I'd like to highlight that if the school board decides to participate in Texas House Bill 547, that non-enrolled students are not being guaranteed a spot on the varsity team or even a minute of playing time. They are being given the opportunity to try their best, to work hard, to earn a spot on the team, and to belong to their community. Non-enrolled students are also required to uphold the same character standards that enrolled students also are, and they're also required to follow the same policies as other students. This decision would also allow non-enrolled students to potentially participate in band and drama, which are two activities that are very hard to find outside of the public school setting locally. So I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight and encourage you to vote in affirmation of Clifton participating in the Texas House Bill 547 in an effort to strengthen our community's future. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have now or at future time, and so again, thank you for your time.
Ms. Sweeney. Ms. Sweeney, you're up. Welcome.
As most of you know, I'm Arlene Sweeney.
She's going to start your timer, just so. Don't be. You're good. Welcome.
So as most of you know, I'm Arlene Sweeney, the tax collector, and not very popular with a lot of people, but we're having major issues with the appraisal district and their appraised values this year. And I want it pointed out to everybody, so everybody knows it's aware. I have found at least fifteen homes that belong to people over sixty-five and frozen, and their values went up a hundred thousand dollars last year. So their taxes went from like eight hundred to twenty-two hundred. So I mean, I've gotten them fixed for the people I know, you know, that have come to me, but I don't know how many are out there that I'm not aware of, and there's a bunch of them. And Mr. Blossom is on the hospital board, and I spoke with him maybe last week. And so he came in this week and said, would you look at mine? His value went up a hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars on his home, and he's over sixty-five and should be frozen as well. So I instructed him to go out and speak with them, but you know, we're just, I don't know what the issue is. Sometimes they tell me clerical error, and then sometimes they tell me something different. But it's odd to me that I can name probably fifteen properties that went up a hundred thousand dollars or more above, and every one of them were over sixty-five and frozen. So gratefully, I've gotten them fixed for them, but they also are not being real open about everything. And as far as people's ag and stuff, if they drive by and you don't have a cow in your pasture, they'll take your ag off. You don't have to have a cow in your pasture every day of the year to have ag. So I've had a lot of customers that that's happened to them as well. So I just think they're out of hand and out of control. I don't know what the real answer is to it, but I just don't think it can continue because it's hurting all the citizens of Boski County and taxpayers, and especially our elderly people, and there's a lot of elderly people in this county. But he told me himself to my face that when the first thing they do when they get ready to start appraising property values is they go to the county clerk's office and get anybody that's filed a lien on their home. And if you took a lien out on your home for a hundred thousand dollars, then your value's going to go up a hundred thousand dollars because they wouldn't have loaned it to you if it wasn't worth it. And I find that hard to believe personally, but I could be wrong, but I know people who tell me it doesn't work that way. And I've called other appraisal districts as well and questioned them as far as, you know, do you do this for a loan? And you know, and none of them I've spoke with, and I've spoke with quite a few, and they're just honestly can't believe what all I'm dealing with over here. And so it's very sad to me that taxpayers are being treated the way they are. And so I just like to make everybody aware of the problem, and hopefully we'll find a solution to get it taken care of before too incredibly long because it's just more out of hand every year, to be honest with you. Have any questions?
If you have somebody who should ask about this, then to reach out to somebody who would be their best point of contact?
Probably me, to be perfectly honest. And I've had a lot of people come in because there's only a couple of, maybe two school districts I haven't been to in one city. I think I've been to every city council meeting and board meeting. In the hospital district, you know, I've made the rounds so that everybody can be aware of it. Okay?
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You got it? Once we're getting information of where to send our people. If not, right, clarification to her?
Justin Newman. I'm sorry. Chief Appraiser. I'm sorry.
No, that's good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for the clarity, Matthew. Great. We will move on to agenda item number five, which is the consent agenda. If everyone has had time to look at the consent agenda, do I have a motion? I'm looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
Can we talk about the budget amendments? Is there part of this?
Uh, we sure can.
Any chance that you could just go over those real quick?
Thank you.
Do you have a specific question for her?
Well, just because they're sizable.
Yes.
Just to bring it out in public.
Perfect.
We spoke briefly about this item, the number 2025-3, last meeting, when we approved the bonus for everybody and so forth. So what I had to do is break down the total amount. Again, this is the supplemental payments that we're receiving from the solar farm. So I recognize the revenue of four hundred and thirty-five thousand, which we've already received. What we're doing with that money is we are buying a switch replacement for our internet to the cost of seventy-five thousand dollars. We're getting a new pole vault mat of twenty-five thousand dollars. We still have, I think, original from twenty, thirty years ago.
Yeah.
We are in need of some desks, so we have inventory as they break. That's ten thousand dollars. We are, we had not budgeted for this year the athletic summer camps, so to pay for coaches to do that and provide it for free to the students, that's six thousand dollars. We are going to attend a safety conference that wasn't budgeted. That's eleven thousand dollars. There will be a new band sign placed on the bleachers. That costs seven thousand dollars. We are steadily replacing kitchen equipment at high school that's about thirty years old. So we're in need of a steamer. That's fifteen thousand dollars. We have original fuel pumps at our transportation department, so we're going to replace those. That bid is twenty thousand dollars. They're going to do a middle school awning along the sidewalk and the curved driveway. That's twenty thousand dollars. We had some water seep into our fuel tanks last year. They asked, when did you ever have it cleaned out? We said, we don't know. Don't know that we ever have. Didn't know that was necessary. So that cost is eight thousand dollars. And since they'll be taking all of our fuel out of that to clean it, we have to put fuel back in. That's not budgeted, so that's ten thousand dollars. We have bids to replace the ceiling tiles in the cafeteria and ag departments. That's thirty-seven thousand. We did give everybody a one thousand dollar bonus since raises were minimal last year. That cost total for the district was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And since we're kind of spreading the instructional money around, we did, I did kind of short the library budget this last year, so. And they've already spent all their money for books and stuff, so I gave them a little extra to still stock up on the library for a thousand. Our stop at ag renewal was short budgeted by about two thousand dollars. Of course, everything goes up every single year. So we are over budget there, so I wanted to cover that area. And then recently been made aware that a lot of the athletic spring activities are farther away, incurring much more travel than has been in the last few years. So the remaining of the four hundred and thirty-five thousand, the seventy-eight hundred dollars will be placed in extracurricular for whoever needs it for the travel. And then the items listed below, again, is just a transcript. And then the items listed below, again, is just a transfer to food service for their payroll bonus and the kitchen equipment.
Any other questions?
Do you want the second one, of course, is just a miscellaneous revenue that we've already recognized, a couple of vendor refunds and stuff. I wanted to allocate that to the expenditures so that everybody got to use their money as needed. The second part of the Second Amendment is the additional bond principal that we paid down. I wanted to recognize the total principal amount that we paid. In doing that, we also saved thirty-seven thousand dollars in interest for the current year. Of course, when we do this, it incurs fees, so there was twenty-two thousand dollars in fees. So the total fund balance effect will be a decrease of our fund balance of two-point-four million dollars.
If not, do we have a motion, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Mr. Ritzman, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Brown, all in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Those abstain? Motion carries. Number six, review of quarterly budget and investment reports. Back at it. Thank you.
I believe the first report that comes up is the investment report. So our market value at the end of the second quarter, which was again last month, at February twenty-eighth, on our general fund at the end of the quarter was, had a balance of cash and investments of thirteen-point-seven million dollars. That's up by three million from the first quarter. Interest and sinking, our total cash and investments was four-point-three million dollars, little up over three-point-two in the prior first quarter. The details of our investments, we have in total, in our investment pools and CDs, twelve-point-nine million dollars. Interest rate is still on the good, ranging at four to four-and-a-half percent. So over the last six months, we have earned two-hundred-and-eleven thousand in interest within our general fund. And also in our interest and sinking, we have four-point-two million dollars in investments and received sixty-one thousand in interest over the last six months. Any questions? The next report is our second quarter budget report for their general fund, ending at the end of February. I highlighted just kind of over to the side, any large variance, percentage variances within the revenue and also the expenditures. So taxes, we have budgeted six-point-four million, we've received five-point-five. At the end of the quarter, it was short by nine-hundred thousand dollars. But I just made a note that March collections were one-point-two million dollars, so we're over budget by about a hundred-and-five percent, so collections have been good this year. Chapter three-one-three revenue, again, we'll make that budget amendment in March. Interest, I had budgeted a hundred-and-fifty thousand, not knowing what the interest rates were B. We've earned two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand total for the first six months, average interest was four percent. There's a few miscellaneous items, athletic gate, of course, is up as well. We budgeted twenty thousand, we've received twenty-eight thousand. I usually try to under-budget that because there's always additional expenditures within our extracurricular, and we'll recognize that and give them more expenditures at that time, or more budget to expend. Our state program revenues, we have budgeted five-point-five million, we received four-point-four. The remaining twenty percent will be paid in August. As I look at the template, we look to be on track, possibly have an extra hundred thousand dollars. It all depends on the ADA for the rest of the year, and attendance and so forth. So total revenue, budgeted is thirteen-point-three million dollars. We've received eleven-point-five million for the first six months of the year. Expenditures, we should be around fifty-five percent of our budget that's been used. The few highlighted items, library, of course, we're a little over. We've expended fifty-seven percent, of course, because we've also spent all of our book budget for the year, in which I stated I'll give them a little bit more. Another item that's, that we've expended fifty-seven percent of is our sports and band and supplies and services expended. Most of that comes, of course, within the supplies you buy at the beginning of the season, so forth. We don't spend it throughout the year, so that's already been expended. Security and monitoring, we have a hundred-and-two thousand budgeted, we've spent thirty-eight thousand. Our SRO, I haven't been billed for for the year. I'll be speaking with our police officer, our police department here shortly for that. Data processing, two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, we had budgeted, a hundred-and-fifty-three, we've spent, or seventy percent of our budget. Annual subscriptions, we pay at the beginning of the year, so that's not allocated throughout the year. Debt service, also one-time payment, so that's why we've spent sixty percent of our budget. Facilities and renovations, we have eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand budgeted, we've spent seven-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. We've accrued for the expenditure of the roof, which will take place this summer. And then our appraisal district, we have budgeted two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, and we've spent a hundred-and-twenty-four, which is only forty-six percent of the budget. And that's only because they did change their budget after the, after it was adopted, so we'll be saving about eighteen thousand over what we have budgeted. Any questions on that? The next page is our school lunch program. So we operate six out of, or ten months out of the year. We've, we have been operating six of the ten, so we've received local funds, sixty-two percent of what we have budgeted, budgeted is seventy-nine thousand, we've received forty-nine. Out of our state matching, we have TRS on behalf, which is offset by our expenditures, so that's a little over budgeted, I suppose. Fifty-nine hundred is our federal funds. We have four-hundred-and-seven, four-hundred-and-seven thousand budgeted, we received two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, or a little over sixty percent, which is six out of the ten months of meals. The grant that we have awarded, which we've received seventy-five thousand of, that's a prior year carryover from COVID, and it offsets our milk purchases. So total revenue, we have budgeted seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, we've received three-hundred-and-thirty-six for the first six months of the year. Our total payroll, or total expenditures for food service was six-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand budgeted, we've spent three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, or fifty-three percent. Our utilities is six months, about half as well. The next fund is our interest and sinking. We have budgeted one-point-seven million in revenue, we received one-point-four million, or eighty-five percent of the budget. Again, March collections came in at two-hundred-and-eight thousand, so we are roughly ninety-six percent of budgeted. Interest is higher than what's budgeted, again, because the interest rate has been so good. Our state funding, we budgeted a hundred thousand, we received a hundred-and-ninety-four thousand. Their calculated hold harmless came in a little bit higher, but we were notified by the lawyers that work for the collection agency that all school district, almost all school districts across the state sent in the wrong numbers for some of the hold harmless for the sixty-five and over. They sent in the wrong numbers, they said that the state's instruction weren't clear. So all school districts did that, they have recently come to the conclusion that they'll get it corrected, send out new instructions, and get those numbers taken care of. So I'm not sure if that's gonna take away from that collection or reduce it for the following year. Let's kind of wait and see. Our debt service payment, we have budgeted one-point-six million, since this was at the end of February, we had only paid interest of two-hundred-and-eighty thousand. I made a little note at the bottom, update on the early defeasance of the debt, a principal payment of two-point-four million dollars, four-seven-eight, was made on March eighteenth. This early payment results in ending the payoff of the bonds, will take place in twenty-thirty-eight instead of twenty-thirty-nine, and it also resulted in a net interest savings of nine-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. Any questions?
Thank you, Lisa.
I thought they were being nice and helping me out with all that paperwork.
Thank you, Lisa, nothing, that is correct. All right, number seven, review and discussion of TASB policy update one-twenty-four.
That is the latest update, we had it on there last month, y'all have had the opportunity to look for it, look through it. I didn't find anything that was of interest or of anything that was disturbing in there, so unless y'all did, we need to discuss.
If we don't have any questions for Mr. Ball, we, I'm looking for a motion to approve the TASB policy update one-twenty-four.
Make the motion that we approve policy update as TASB has provided.
I have a motion by Ms. Willman, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Ritzman, all in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Those abstain? Motion carries. Number eight, discussion and consideration of agreement with the drug-dog services.
So interquest canines, yes, that is our, that's been our drug-dog service since two thousand and four, as you can read in there. We've been happy with them, they come out eight times a year, at high school and middle school. Me with the principal or assistant principal, and they walk them around and...
Did you say, I'm sorry, I missed that, did you say high school and middle school?
Correct. Parking lot and everything.
Thank you, usually how long are they here?
It's a half-a-day visit, I don't know if they'll, how long y'all spend with them, depends on how many rooms they're going to and...
Where did eight visits come up?
Someone probably made that.
They do four at each campus or eight together?
They'll come, do they do four at each campus or is it eight?
They do both campuses.
Yeah, when they come, they do both, that's what I thought.
So eight total for the year, both campuses together? How does the process work, does, when the drug-dog comes, do the kids, yep, please? What does that look like for the teacher and the student?
Yeah, so it's totally random, we don't, of course, they always come.
They get our calendar, so they're not supposed to come on testing days.
Yeah, so, yeah, they block out, we block out the testing dates and that sort of thing, but every day's crazy. But they show up randomly, we don't know when they're coming. We really, all we do is escort them around to the classrooms, and we just visit, basically, sometimes we have them go through the parking lot, and they'll do like a third of the parking lot at a time, because it's too much, it's hard for, it's a lot of work for the dog. So they'll do, you know, different sections each time for the high school. Then we go to classrooms, just random classrooms. Teachers and students are asked to step in the hall, they, they, the dog, we stay outside also, so we don't, the dog and the handler go inside. And if the dog alerts on anything, we just get that bag or purse or whatever it is, and then we'll let the class go back in, and then we'll go to an empty classroom, and they explain what the dog detects and types of things, and ask permission to search. And so that's, and then they, the handler does all the searching, whether it's a vehicle or not, because they're trained to do searches and wear gloves and safety equipment and stuff, so they do that, and that's basically, that's basically it.
Thank you.
So I have a question, how often do they find something?
Not very often, sometimes we get alerts, but it's usually, because a lot of our, a lot of our students are out, you know, if you have firearms in the vehicle, they detect illegal drugs, alcohol, gunpowder and so forth. So if there's a shotgun shell or an empty casing, or if it's even been in there, sometimes there'll be leftover residues that they might detect, but it's very rare.
Or Tylenol or any kind of...
Yeah, it will do over the counter, so it's, but it's, I think it's been pretty effective to term. There's been less and less each year.
Good, that's good.
Thank you, we appreciate that, thank you for walking us through that, Mr. Jackson. If there are no other questions, do we have a motion to approve the agreement? Or do I have a motion, I'm sorry?
I so moved to approve the agreement.
I have a motion by Mr. Conrad, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Dolem, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Number nine, discussion and consideration of House Bill five-forty-seven, homeschool participation in UIL activities.
So as Ms. Boyd talked about earlier, she had come and spoken, I'd gotten an email from the Boyd's back in January, put this information in there, expressing their support for the board to pass House Bill five-forty-seven. That was passed in two thousand and twenty-one by the legislature to allow homeschool students to participate in UIL activities through the public school. At that time, that July, the board voted on it, at the time we were still in the PAC. The board had voted, discussed it, voted on it to not allow homeschool participation, but after Ms. Boyd came and spoke, you know, wanted to be put back on the agenda to discuss that again and reconsider that possibility. You can see in there, I put the information in there, I put a list in there of the districts that currently allow homeschool participation, which is around forty, I believe, out of the twelve-hundred districts in the state. There is a, and I printed this so you wouldn't have to look at it on there. This is the, if you've gone on the website, the UIL FAQ is kind of a, you gotta push the plus sign to get to the question and answers, but this is the FAQ from the UIL. A lot of the, a lot of the decisions that must be made as far as homeschool participation and the rules are a local decision. There are some things that are not allowed by UIL. For instance, if a student had currently been in a, in a public school during that school year, they would not be allowed to become a homeschool student and participate that year. As far as eligibility, academic eligibility for the year, the beginning of the year, that student would need to take, would be required to take a norm reference, nationally-recognized test, such as Iowa test or one of those, given by a third party, and the district would be required to accept that as them being on grade level. That would have to show grade level proficiency. Past that through the year, the only eligibility requirements are what the parent turns in. They would be responsible for, if it's a nine-week calendar, like at the elementary, or a six-week calendar, like at the secondary level, they would be required to turn in their grades for their student at that six-week time, on that Friday when the six weeks ends.
Do we have any questions, any discussion? On the House bill?
That was new information for me about House Bill thirty-seven oh eight and twenty-three that then includes payments from the state. I didn't know that that was, I thought that we got nothing, but that includes, you know, fifteen hundred dollars per student per activity, which was nice, because before it was a very, you know, at least for me, it was a very emotional, two sides of the argument, you know, a very, an emotional argument and then a logical argument, or a reasonable argument. You know, the emotional is, you know, we're here to serve our community. I love to incorporate everybody in our community in that, but then, you know, we do get, we have costs that we have to pay in coaches and teachers, and that, and we get paid per kids coming here, for attendance. So that, that, that helped with that, that side of the argument, it doesn't, it doesn't fully sway it, just because it doesn't, doesn't add up, you know, to the full amount of the cost. But they're not getting all the services anyway, but, yeah, this was, it's a challenge. The questions that I had on there that I emailed Mr. Ball today, thank you for the answers for those.
Kind of strange way to put on, you know, if a kid is playing basketball, and they'd be having to check in during, in school, I mean, how would that work? They're not gonna just walk up to the gym, lock doors.
Correct. And we would have to create a local policy on what our requirements would be. And for me, if, they'd have to report to everything, I mean...
I'm talking about just checking into the school.
Oh, right.
Correct, so they would, they would have to go to the main, to the, to the front office or whatever campus that would be, because if we're talking about a middle school student, okay? So they may have, because the participation guidelines are gonna be the same as they are for all of our, for our enrolled students, so they're gonna have to be at every single practice. And so if it's a before-school practice, they would have to be before-school practice, come back for band if they're in band. Come back for band if they're in band, come back after school. But at that time, when they come, they would go to the main office here or the main office up there and then go to that class. They couldn't, you're right, they couldn't just walk up to the basket and show up at the gym.
Maybe we'll differ for football or something, but...
They'd have to check in versus go straight to the field house. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Because just like with everything else, like when we have subs here or anything, we've got to know who's on campus.
Sure.
For safety reasons.
Sure.
And be expected to be in the athletic period?
Correct. That would be one of our participation guidelines. We've talked about this at length with the administrators because one of the questions that, when we were talking about this with the leadership team, one of the questions that came out, well, what if it's a high school student that's only going to play basketball? Well, our, our basketball is off-season and begins the first day of school. So for the non-enrolled students, they would be required to be in the athletic period from the first day of school through the end of basketball season. Just like if they were only going to be a track student, I mean, a track athlete.
So it's a full year commitment, not just the sport they want to play?
Correct.
That would be a local policy, but what I hear him saying is his leadership team would recommend that they would have to be in off-season. They couldn't just be a one-sporter. And then, you know, if you just played baseball, baseball has 6:45 weight mornings and then you have to be back for athletics and then back for your after-school practice.
And one of the things too, and I know this question was one of the ones that Mr. Ritzman kind of referred to in there, is about UIL academics. And it doesn't have to be every single activity. You know, the board could approve one activity only. But if we're going to do UIL activities, UIL academics, such as last week when we went to West, you know, or middle school, we host the middle school, well, they do that at different times during the day for practice. You know, middle school will practice during enrichment. High school may practice during that teacher's conference period or get the stuff and practice during that class period if they're not, if they finish the work or whatever. And so for academics, it's a little bit different because you can't give everybody free rein to the campuses. But that's basically what it would have to be for, at the high school level, for academic practices when they, when they do it.
So participants would, could elect to do one thing or two or three. It would be up to the parents then too to choose whichever. But what I hear you saying is they would need to follow the same training, the same time schedule as our public school students.
That's correct. And it says in there, Ms. Boyd mentioned this as well, and it says in that UIL FAQ and in that board member question document as well, that they are, they're under the same guidelines as any of the enrolled students. Student code of conduct, any of that, practice, attendance, anything that goes along with that.
Is there anything as far as travel, bus rides, places?
That is also a local decision. However, it would be, just like it is for our enrolled students, they would be required to ride the bus to the event.
And then you can sign out.
Correct.
If the coach allows them to sign out.
Correct.
Because that would all depend on the coach's requirement.
What about as far as insurance, as far as sporting, like injuries, stuff like that? Local decision or how would that?
Well, I don't know exactly how, because I was just supplemental, but that's supplemental for our enrolled students. I don't know, I don't know exactly how that would work as far as, that's probably an insurance question we'd have to find out.
Should have emailed it today. Sorry.
I didn't think about it till just now. Obviously, we get paid by the state on ADA.
Correct.
Would we be looking at losing students to this and they're going to go homeschool and then play sports if we did this? That are current students?
Maybe.
We'll gain a few, obviously, but we lose some, it kind of hurts us.
So we get $1,500 for the year? So what do we make?
Yes.
Per student, per activity.
Per student, per activity.
Per student, per activity.
Now, one of the things, and I talked to another superintendent about this today, one of the things that may affect, and like I said, there's, there's only 40 out of 1,200 or 46 or whatever it is that do this. One of the things that could affect this is if the, if the legislature passed the ESA. You know, there's a $2,000, depending on how the ESA's pan out, but there's a discussion on $2,000 for homeschool students. So then it would be beneficial for, if they, if they so chose, for, as you're saying, students to leave, to get the money to, you know, they're going to get the $2,000. We'll lose the 6160, but we'll get the $1,500 per activity back. So there could be, in the end, there could be some parents that choose to go homeschool anyway based on that. I don't know if that's going to be a factor, but that's what that superintendent had told me today.
It's a tough one.
It is tough.
It's a tough, love sports, love for kids to have all the same opportunities, but when our kids enter into those hallways every day, they're student athletes. And so if you're riding a bus and you get home at 11 and our requirement is you show up and take the ACT the next day, guess what? You show up and take the ACT because that's what they asked you to do. So for me, I just try, when I'm trying to do anything and any big decisions with educational stuff, I did it in my classroom, I try to stay fair, firm and consistent at all times. And this is hard place for me for consistency. So those are just kind of my thoughts on it. The consistency piece is tough to maintain and that's just my personal opinion on it.
Tough to maintain with allowing the, this program to come into...
Because we don't have any way of, we also don't have any way of consistent discipline. And we don't have any consistent way of what their curriculum is. I am sure that most homeschooler families or non-enrolled students do what they feel is best for their students and we all do that as well. But they don't have to follow a curriculum. So if they so choose to not teach science and social studies, they don't have to. And so I think, I mean, our kids have to come and give us their very best every day and they do as well, you know? But there's not a lot of, there's just not any consistency for me. And that's just where I lie in it. If there was more consistency, because yes, I want everyone to be recognized as a Clifton Cub, but there also is, when you walk into those hallways, you have a standard that you have to be able to maintain and...
Inconsistency for, not just for, I guess I was thinking about it more for the homeschool kids getting the opportunity to be served by us, but also for the kids, for the public school kids here for, for the fairness of them. Because I didn't think about it, you know, yeah, if they get back from a track meet or a softball game at 11 o'clock, they got to be here at 7:30, whereas, you know, hey, it'd be awesome to have, you know, the flexibility that homeschool has and...
The freedom. It's great. I'm jealous of it. There's a lot of times.
In my eyes, any local rules that we made governing, you know, when they had to be here would completely take away flexibility. I mean, it's a huge commitment to come here. I know how much my kids are here and that's a, that's a big commitment. It's true.
And I was going to point that out. I think if, if homeschool parents participate and want the kids to come, it is going to be a huge commitment and they will have to adjust their schedule quite drastically from what they're doing now. It remains to be seen whether they will, but I think if, if what I'm reading is they want to come bad enough that, that they probably will make that commitment.
I look at it as, and I told the Boyd's when they first emailed me this back in January, and I've told you all this and you can read it in there too. So the bottom line for me is relationships are built all day long. You know, with my kids and y'all's kids and everybody else's kids, whether they're participating in band or ag or UIL or athletics. Those relationships are going to be built in the hallways, in the cafeteria, in the locker room, not just out on the practice, not just out on the practice field, the practice court or in the band hall. That's my thing is it's a relational piece for me.
And our decision needs to be based on homeschool or any, any person that lives in our district that homeschools. It can't just be based off of one family unfortunately that has come and talked to us and that, that's a hard decision.
For sure.
You're correct.
For sure.
It's like we always talk about, you have to take the emotion out of doing the facts.
My son plays with Gavin and has for years and we love Gavin. So this is hard.
It's, it's very tough because we want, we want what's best for, for all kids truly. And, and that's just one of those things. I mean, we have to, it's tough because sports teach a lot of really awesome lessons about life and character and they teach all the really good things. But it's just, it's a tough call and I'll be looking for y'all's direction. It can also be one of those things, I think. I may be talking too early, but it's something we can keep the current policy that we have in place and we work on drafting rules. You know, I, I don't know, but we would have to have, you know, we would have to have all of that in place and discipline would be an issue as well. So we would have to, you know, work through all of that and make sure that we know that the, like you said, we know that the Boyd's, you do life with the Boyd's, so you know what type of character that they have. We don't know what the type of character is of all the homeschool families in our district and...
Or future.
That's right.
Very likely.
And so we would have to have strict disciplinary actions and it's one of those things. If kids make a poor choice because they're going to, they're children, you know, how does a kid get disciplined? I don't know. You know, so...
Andy, have you talked to any superintendents that are in this program?
The only one I've talked to is Dana Davis at Meridian.
At Meridian? How many kids do they have in it?
Three.
Three.
What a...
Two families, three, three kids.
So do, do schools like Meridian take transfer students for the homeschool? What does that look like?
They have to live in the...
They have to live in the district.
Correct. You cannot transfer in and participate in this.
Yeah, I read that in the policy. They have, if they have to, we have to allow it.
Yep. So they have three?
Yes, that's what she told me.
My question was, is what's keeping them from walking away and preventing them from liking what they're doing? You know, mid-season or come and sign up and get started and they'll like it and don't show up anymore. You know, obviously the kids that are in the hallways, a little different.
Right. Because if you're here and you quit football, you can't, you can't participate in basketball until football's over.
And so, I mean, obviously that might be a rule too.
Yes, that would have to be in the participation guidelines that if you, you know, if you're participating in whatever that activity is, then you're either done for the year or done for the, until the next activity or whatever. But yes, that would be part of the participation guidelines that the directors of all the programs would come up with.
Right.
Do we have to make a decision today or is this something we can finalize at a later meeting?
We, in order for, if I'm reading this correctly, on House Bill 40, on the FAQ, if we're looking for varsity sports, it needs to be decided by August 1st.
Because we have to, we have to notify the UIL at that point, before that point. So it'd have to be done, and that's why we did it last time was in July, after that law was passed.
Well, we may be a little premature because we don't even know what rules we might put together or guidelines we would use and we may need to do some work on that before we actually decide.
We need that in place long before August though, wouldn't we? Since football starts in August.
The guidelines, for sure.
Or, you know, like we've kind of, our, our standard deal lately with doing new policies is we bring them, we talk about them and then we push it off till next week and then next month, then we can revisit and decide if we want to move forward with incorporating House Bill 547 with participation rules or if we want to stay with the current policy we have in place.
Because I can tell you in general, from, from talking to administrators and talking to activity directors in general, the rules are going to be what we have in place now.
Sure.
And so you don't want to, you don't want to put everybody doing a whole, a whole lot of extra work on this if it's not going to be approved. So in general, you can take, of course, student code of conduct, but you can take the athletic policy, the band handbook, those types of things. That's going to be the rules. Plus, you're going to have, they're going to have to be here at all times, during all practices, before, after school, even through off-season, so...
How much paper work or, I mean, obviously it would be a lot, I'm assuming. Because we can't just say, hey, follow the student or the athletic handbook. Because, I mean, I just feel like it's going to be a lot, somebody's going to be doing a lot of work writing stuff.
Amendments.
Well, it's all done.
Yeah, it's, it's...
All the stuff that...
But you said we get to decide on everything individually, right?
No, we would take those, if you're going to add anything to what we currently do. There would be like policies that we put in place as far as sign-in policies for coming into, you know, stuff like that.
Few things like that, yeah.
New year period, stuff like that, but all the big stuff's already done.
But would we be doing like all athletics, all UIL or we'd be saying football only, baseball only?
I see what you're saying.
Think about.
Yeah, I mean, you could start with one. I don't know. It's something we can, we can kind of, we spent some time, we've kind of discussed it. It gives us a time. The next meeting is April 21st, I think. Do I have that right? And we can come back to it. You have some more diving into it?
And it gives y'all the opportunity for people to come and speak. No, no one's come and spoken to me about it.
That's right.
So it gives y'all the opportunity now to speak to other people or people come and speak to y'all about it?
I'm not sure how many homeschool families and kids we have in Clifton. I know several. And you said Meridian has three students?
Three students from two families, is what she told me.
Three students from two families and so we don't know exactly what they're generating as far as money coming in. You know, if they're playing two sports apiece, that'd be $3,000.
Times three.
Last question for Andy. How many homeschool families do we have here in our school district?
I don't know.
Don't know? No way to know that?
No.
No, we don't have to track that.
I just wondered if the policies...
I've been thinking ahead, what, what might be?
The local community that meets here, well, they, they stopped meeting in Clifton and they meet over in Meridian now, but they had over 75 students enrolled in that co-op itself and a lot of families don't attend that co-op.
Okay.
And they travel and they go.
Okay, great. No, that's good. Seventy, you said 75?
Over 75 students attend that single co-op.
Thank you.
My best guess would be there's over 100.
Thank you.
In this district alone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this is all banned too, right?
Yes.
It can be banned drama, it can be any of it. Anything that UIL, academics, banned drama, athletics.
FFA? No, they probably not.
Oh, I don't know.
Is it any of UIL?
Yeah, it'd be FFA.
So that was an important question because if we approve it, then how many more will come? I don't, I don't know. It's just something we need to consider.
You're talking about like, like the size, like the size could get bigger?
Yeah, how many, yeah.
Obviously, it wouldn't affect our classroom size, but athletic.
Yeah, except those, they count as an ADA? They do not count an ADA?
They don't count on your snapshot either.
So I mean, table what we got and talk to, talk to people, talk to kids. I think getting the kids' perspective on it, you know, current students, I think that was very valuable for me.
It was for me as well.
It was for me as well. I said nobody's talked to me, but I have a student or two that have talked to me.
Yeah, so, and then we postpone the vote on it till next?
April.
Sound good with that?
Works for me. Everybody in agreeance with that? Fantastic. We will table that to April 21st.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And Ms. Boyd, as always, thank you for coming.
Thank you for asking. I appreciate it.
Number 10. Discussion and consideration of adjustment of the 25, 24, 25 school calendar.
So, and if y'all need a copy of this year's calendar, I made copies so you could look at the Fridays we were discussing. But when we did our calendar back before this year, because we've done this the last couple of years, if y'all remember, we've had those, those extra minutes and so we've done early release days in May. And then it was, it was Ms. Willman's idea to go ahead and put that on the calendar as a possible adjustment day in May. So people would know upfront. We talked about it when we did the calendar. So we did that. We had those, those Fridays in May, May 2nd, May 9th and May 16th. So we talked about it with the leadership team. We've got six and a half days worth of minutes built up. And so what, what I would recommend is that we take those Fridays completely off and not do early release days. And then Monday, May 12th is the Monday after Mother's Day. Mother's Day is May 11th. And so Ms. Jones had the idea that if we do Monday, May 12th as well, even though it wasn't marked as a Friday, I mean, marked as a potential day, then that would be a four-day weekend for Mother's Day. a potential day, then that would be a four-day weekend for Mother's Day if we did Friday and Monday. Not trade that one of those Fridays out for the Monday, but do a, do a Friday, Monday. So we're looking at the second, the ninth, the twelfth, and the sixteenth. And I talked to the, talked to the administrators, I talked to several of the teachers. They feel like that's not going to, well, it's not going to affect them being able to get everything done by the end of the year. They need to get done. So, yes. And I think for our, for the, for our teachers, um I believe that would be a huge benefit. Being able to, being able to do this. Because we do have the extra minutes.
So we said May second, May ninth.
Second, May ninth.
May twelfth and May sixteenth.
Sixteenth would be the four. And you can, as we, and Ms. Willman had this question last year, was to do either the early release days or um the full days out. I recommend we do the full days out, but if you choose to do some of these days as early release days, none of these days is, whatever you decide to do is um is your decision, but I think those, I think that's, it's been a great thing we've been able to do the last couple of years. I think it's very beneficial to our teachers.
I prefer a full day out, but I don't, I would love y'all's feedback on that. Um, I don't know what.
Yeah, full day here. I'm good.
Yes.
That's kind of.
Yeah, I think my only reservation is thinking about everyone that works.
Sure.
Right, I mean, it's only.
That's right.
Doesn't necessarily affect my family, but.
The masses, for sure.
Can we talk about that before too? Because one of the months I think we did this was in April, which was still six weeks to plan out.
Yeah, which I think was good to have it on there and just, is anybody paying attention to it or not?
Well, I think it'll take.
We discussed it multiple times.
I think it'll take people a year, like this year, to see what it is and kind of ask the question. But I think once you set the tone for it, people will start to be like, what is, why is that in yellow? And they'll start to slowly understand.
And it looks like maybe um just based on um Dr. Brown's schedule, like they didn't schedule anything for those days. So it helped them know not to schedule things for that potential change.
For sure.
Which is good.
And I think that that was with the middle school as well, because last year we had a trip planned on one of those Fridays before we discussed this.
The twelfth might mess with senior week.
Though, well, they've already, I think they've thought about that.
Oh, never mind. Sounds great. Good job, Mr. Jackson. I, it's a great solution. Good job. So.
It would be worth.
The twelfth looks great.
To send something out to everybody and say, hey, just check your calendar. These days are going to be off.
For sure.
Yeah.
Oh, if it's approved.
It's been a summary on parents and handbooks every, since the last year's was adopted. It's been on the handbook summary page.
Perfect.
Calendar's.
Yes.
Perfect.
And addressing it now, it gives them thirty days.
Yeah.
It does. It allows them, the families, some time.
Because then also, I'm, I'm assuming that some of the daycares take some of the kids that are the younger ones, so they're adjusting as well.
Probably. Yes, if it's approved, it'll, it'll go out. If these are the days that we will have early release days, four days.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with the days off.
Not only does it excite uh teachers, it excites students as well.
Oh, yeah.
Because I have two at home that have already asked me.
Oh, mine told me going out the door this morning.
They too pay.
Not that they don't want to come to school, but.
They too pay attention to the agenda. The things are important to them.
I didn't even tell him and he's like, make sure you vote no.
They stay informed on the important things.
We don't need to school school.
Well, Ms. New made this point the other day when we were doing Mr. Conrad's local orientation. Um, I, I think last month we had thirty, maybe thirty of our staff members watching this live feed, so.
They will, they will be celebrating. So we see you, teachers. We know you're excited. Um, if there is no other questions or discussion for um Mr. Ball, I need a motion to approve the changes to the current twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar.
Okay, so I make the motion that we approve uh for the dates of the second, the ninth, the twelfth, and the sixteenth. That's all of them, correct?
Correct.
That with the excess hours that we have, that we make those no school days.
Have a motion by Mr. Ritzman. Do I have a second?
Say again.
Have a second by Mr. Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining?
Here.
Motion carries.
And you're cheering out in the.
I know. They're all like, yay! Congratulations to the people.
And Mr. Nelson, that's here.
That's right. You get to celebrate first, Mr. Nelson. Mark your calendar now. Uh, number eleven, uh, the discussion of district surveys.
I put in there, so we talked about this back in July, when we reviewed the current survey data we had at that time. Yes, that's my paper. I was looking for that. How do you go with this woman? Um, there was a recommendation from Stephanie Kachere and Patrick Murphy when we met, Ms. New and I met with them to talk about our goal work, goal workshop, um and some different training we were going to do with them to narrow that number down to the number of surveys that we had done. And that's what we talked about in July, was narrowing that down, because we'd done three within the school year, three within the calendar year, two specifically during that school year. And then uh cut the number of questions down as well. And so at that point, we talked about it that night. No decision was ever made whether we were going to do one this year, do none this year and start over in the fall, or how we were going to do it, so.
And this was brought to my attention, and so it's just kind of a thing for discussion. Do you think it's something we need to um continue? Do we want to wait till the fall? You know, I'm just open to hear um take y'all's lead on this.
Surveys are good, but less is more.
Yeah.
For sure.
Our last one was in May of twenty-four, right? So the end of the last school year.
Correct. And then we reviewed that in July.
Yeah.
We talked about talking points and being the number one way to get information out.
Yeah, I definitely think that we don't need the three anymore. You know, that was uh, that was useful initially.
Correct.
Now it's just way too much. And you can see, obviously, the numbers, they just drop off.
And I think y'all discussed that at the time. Let's get this started and see and see where we need to go from there.
We still didn't, do need an avenue of uh communication. Feedback.
Feedback. For sure.
My thought in bringing this back up was to do one for the end of the school year. You know, we haven't done it in a year. There's new families, um maybe if we get it sent out, um that last week or within the next thirty days, we can get a good representation before people go out for summer. And then we talk about it in the summer.
Yeah. And we can make any adjustments to the school year if needed.
I think it definitely needs to be before May. I think maybe in April, just because May, everybody's checked out.
We'll send it May second.
Kids.
You checked it out?
Parents, kids, teachers, like everybody's, you know, everybody's, you know, at that point. So I think, you know, as long as we can send out early enough to where we still have people engaged.
I agree.
And still have a, a will to communicate, you know, I think that'd be it.
Maybe end of April, like the last two weeks of April. How long do we usually leave the window open?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. So maybe, I think the questions that we used the last time were good. You may um send those to us in the weekly update, the ones that we had. And since we're going to be on the timeline of um encouraging him to push those out the last two weeks, if you could get that to us to just see the questions. Because I don't remember what they were.
Well, there were forty-nine on the parent guardians and there were thirty-eight on the teachers.
Questions? Oh, yeah, we're going to need to.
That's why they had recommended that we.
Cut that down.
We had done that. We also changed it to by sections, school safety, relationships, and things like that. But I can send you tomorrow a copy of the current survey.
That would be good. And we can give him some feedback and give him some direction to move um that way so that we can be ready to roll those out at the, at last two weeks of April.
And we also changed it last time. We edited back in, um when we changed the questions back in November of twenty-three to more I questions, such as, I feel my child gets a good education, or I feel like I'm teaching the curriculum I need to, instead of my child is, or, you know, it was more personal that way.
And we got responses. Well, yeah. Um, I, I personally do not remember the questions that we asked. So if you would re-send that to us tomorrow, we can look at it. And we're going to need to direct him um on questions we either like or don't like. And we're on a time, we too are on a time crunch. So we have some homework as well.
And so our next, as long as we can get all that in, our next board meeting is on the twenty-first.
Mm-hmm.
That's a, that's a bad weather day.
The twenty-first is a bad weather day?
Yeah.
Great. We're probably meeting anyway. I think we decided that, right?
Is that the Monday after Easter?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, sure is.
So the twenty-eighth?
Uh, I thought the board meeting was April twenty-first.
That's what I thought too.
Did we not?
I think she was asking if you wanted to change it.
Is that what she's asking us? We don't have to, we don't have that on the agenda to be able to do that. We're, it'll be April twenty-first.
Well, if we didn't already move it, then twenty-first it is.
That's what, that's what I was like saying. We don't have it on the agenda. We just need to double check that.
Is there anything we could discuss tonight about it?
Oh, I have it on the twenty-eighth.
You do have it on the twenty-eighth?
Cheers. April twenty-eighth, on the, on the website, April twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Twenty-eighth.
Where you go? We're going to do the last two weeks. Um, yeah, so what do you want? And you don't have to approve them at the board meeting. No.
No, we don't. We can direct him. We just.
They're going to need, the leadership team's going to need to look through them too and see, you know, if you have, if you have ten in that school safety or ten in the relationship and you want to narrow that down, what's the most important, I wouldn't say most important.
Sure.
What five are we going to get the most useful information out of?
For sure.
Because you may be able to cut it in half.
Do you want your leadership team to narrow it down and then send it to us?
We can. I think that'd be a really good idea, because other ones are going to use the information.
Yeah, perfect.
Absolutely.
And if there's something else y'all would like to know that may not be on there.
We'll shoot it to you.
I would say at least half off.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, same.
Cut it in half.
Cut it in half.
Twenty-five questions.
Um.
So I'll have them look at it. But I'll, I'll go ahead and send y'all tomorrow. Well, maybe Wednesday. We have district track tomorrow, but I'll get it to you in the next couple of days for you to look at the current questions we have.
That way, because we're going to have some homework, but they, let them narrow it down and then get, send it to us as a reminder, a gentle reminder. And um, just kidding, the board meeting is April twenty-eighth.
Testing this.
We, yeah, we were just seeing if everyone was with us.
And if you would like to see the survey data before, that we, it's still in board book for July twenty, twenty twenty-four.
Yes, y'all can.
The comparisons and things like that. It's still in there.
Great.
Which has the, has the questions on that comparison, so.
So we all know, we all understand, we have homework and um we'll proceed forward so that we, we're going to want to roll those out probably April twenty-second, just since the twenty-first is a day off. All right? Any other questions? Great. Reports, superintendent.
Come on, report it out.
Business manager.
Lisa.
Report it out. Uh, principals?
And one addition I forgot to put on there as far as uh field trips. I think we'll be taking a field trip on the sixteenth as well uh to the Codex and then doing a day as a part.
Great. They will love that. Uh, curriculum director, do you have anything, Mr. Jackson?
Well, I forgot to put the library statistics on there for February. And Mr. Perez sent this to me. In February, we had eight hundred and fifty-nine books, actual books checked out. That's an increase of two hundred and twenty-four from last year.
Okay, Mr. Perez.
The ebooks were down, probably because the real books got checked out more.
That's right.
So the uh ebook down three thirty-eight and that's down a hundred and thirty-five from last year. And that's just middle school, high school, um for all those books. District-wide, the online resources used as district wide level for February was thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-six, uh which is an increase of fifteen hundred and fifty-eight from last year, but same district wide.
Great.
So, yeah, so. That's one of those where we're spending all the money.
There you go. There you go.
Money for more books, because the students really are checking.
But it's been worth it. That's great. That's awesome.
But it's, it's uh hanging on.
And Dr. Brown didn't mention this. I know he put it in his report. Um, I had it in my weekly update Friday. So if you were able to come up here, if you have elementary children, you were able to come up here for Coach Davis's, um, I know you were up here as well. Coach Davis's parent P E last week, she had two hundred and forty-seven parents. Now, some of them, when I was over there, were they may, they were back-to-back and it was an hour's worth of, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't really watching their child do stuff. It was they were doing stuff.
You were doing it.
While their child was doing it as well. Their child was laughing at it.
I thoroughly enjoyed.
It was good.
Learning her systems and how her classroom worked. Yeah, the bananas, the grapes, and the how she counted them off in one, teams of one and two. I mean, it was great.
And she told me.
Thank you for, for um letting her do that, because it really was. It was fun to be over there with the kids.
The most she'd ever done, she told me this, I think it was a hundred and thirty or a hundred and twenty-eight or whatever's the most she'd ever had shown up before. So one of the things y'all have been working on in the last year or more was parent engagement, parent involvement, getting people up here. That was a, a huge way to do it. And she, she really came through on that.
It was fun.
One of the things that was really notable about that is that it was small groups of parents coming in at specific times. And so you had, I think, more engagement, actual engagement, not just attendance, but engagement with the, the students and their activity. And uh I think, from my perspective, I love when we do the open house and we have like four or five hundred people come through. But we had two hundred and forty-seven over the, the length of four days and that there was a lot of interaction with the P E staff as well as the students. And so I think overall it was really in a, a, a big plus for our parent engagement program with elementary. Uh, one thing that Coach Davis has talked about is doing it again in the fall um with probably the exclusion of kindergarten, because they're still learning the systems.
Sure.
But doing it uh about midway in the fall and then doing a spring one again. And that just allows more parents to get involved and understand the systems.
Yeah, it was fun. I got uninvited the fir-, after the first day, but I returned back. I returned back. Not by the teacher, by my student.
We did talk about her getting some tether balls. People don't know what tether ball is anymore. Some parents play tether ball. She can now talk about that too, so.
But it was great.
Anyway, it was good.
It was. Anything else?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jackson, for adding, and here is the academic contest for our high school U I L. Um, it's very, very enlightening to see how many of our kids are participating in that and how well they did academic, academic U I L. Just not ever having a high schooler. I was very impressed to see that and happy that my kid was part of it as well. Looking forward to those going on to state.
Yes, and you know, we're the smallest school in our district.
Yes.
Smallest school in our district. So we're competing against just schools with maybe two hundred more students than we are. So, and it's, they have a lot more to choose from and, and a lot of our students are doing multiple things. And so it's, it's a big accomplishment that shows we have some high quality students.
And they were ready. They had them at the gym down there that day. When it was their time to go to science or whatever it was, those four kids were ready and went and found, well, took the science kids to their room, but they were ready to go and it was good.
I think it's really great. I think it really shows our, our um, us looking at high performing and what are we giving our kids to be high performers and that those contests are truly impacting those kids and what they're able to do.
It's true.
Yeah, Ms. Seurat does a really good job and her, her coaches that do those.
I, I too appreciate it, just knowing where all the people stand. So that's great. Uh, curriculum director.
Uh, the only thing I want to add is Mr. Ball has a sample of the three-through-five math, if you want to look at that. Uh, instructional materials, T E C certification is next month. So that's our one high quality sample they have sent us. Uh, that is the Blue Bonnet Math, which was formerly called Eureka. It was part of the COVID funds. We are piloting it with fourth grade and we have all year.
Okay.
Um, and then uh just if anyone wants to know, we are not hosting a kindergarten 3K roundup. We've looked at that. Uh, you legally don't have to host one. The turnout has been very low the last few years. We know that we're going to keep our two 3K teachers. We know we're going to maintain our full kindergarten teachers. So we're going to just push all registration to follow the same uh early fall schedule.
Pretty cool. Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Technology director?
She said nothing to add.
Hello, band director?
Nothing to add.
ESL director, athletic directors at baseball, special programs, no, maintenance, no, ag, no. Do we need executive session? Yes, fantastic. At seven twenty-three, we will go into executive session. Forty, we will come out of executive session. Mr. Ball, do you have any recommendations for us?
I do. Based on the recommendations of Dr. Brown and Mr. Bartlett, I recommend that we offer contract extensions for the elementary assistant principal job to Mr. Gerke.
Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Willman, do I have a second?
Say yes.
Have a second by Mr. Dommel, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining, motion carries.
Thank you, and I recommend we offer the contract extension for the middle school assistant principal to Ms. Hanson.
Have a recommenda-, oh, have a recommendation by Mr. Ball, do I have a motion to accept?
Make the motion that we accept Ms. Hanson's extension?
I have a motion from Mr. Ritzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Brown, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining, motion carries.
Thank you.
Is there any other further business? If there is none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn?
Have a motion by Mr. Ritzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Willman, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at seven forty-one.
Thank y'all for coming.